Good morning. We're going to get started with Pastor Ray Griffin, who's going to lead us in invocation, and then we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Todd Stone.
Thank you, Mayor Holt. Let's bow our heads and pray together. Heavenly Father, I pray for the people of our city today. I pray for the welfare of our city and that you bless us all with your grace. I lift up to you, Mayor Holt, and this council. May you provide them with wisdom and discernment as they make decisions, large and small. I pray for those who serve our city, particularly our first responders, that you would give them energy and courage to not lose heart. Grant us hearts and minds of creativity and dedication to our work with humility. Help us to protect and provide for the vulnerable in our city, and may we all today be marked by kindness, generosity, and mercy. Your will be done in your kingdom come, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal, liberty, justice, for all.
All right. Call this meeting of the council to order, and we have nothing from the office of the mayor, and everyone rejoices there. So, we will move swiftly to item four, Journal of Council Proceedings.
Move the items.
We've got a motion to move both items A and B. Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then we've got item five, Request for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, several this morning. Starting on page 13, item 9C, so PUD 1669, 9C, the applicant is requesting that this item be deferred until the October 23rd council meeting. Again, item 9C.
Okay.
And moving to page 16, under 9G1, item R 1721 Northwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item S 215 Southwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item 10 316 Northwest 26th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item X 2237 Northwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AA 1245 Southeast 39th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AH 3909 Southeast 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item AN 715 Northwest 91st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 17, under items 9H1, item L 1721 Northwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M 316 Northwest 26th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N 2237 Northwest 33rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q 1245 Southeast 39th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item U 3909 Southeast 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item X 715 Northwest 91st Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving to page 19, under Claims for Denial, page 19, item 9M1F, we ask that that be stricken, and that will be reworked and brought back to council.
Okay. Thank you. We will so note. That moves us to item six, Revocable Permits. Item A, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Down Syndrome Association of Central Oklahoma to hold the Down Syndrome Festival in 5K on September 29th, 2018, at Mickey Mantle Drive between Sheridan and Reno. And I believe we have Sarah here. Yes, please come forward, and if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and feel free to speak on the matter.
My name is Sarah Sewell. I'm the Executive Director for the Down Syndrome Association of Central Oklahoma. We're located on 23rd Street, and we'd like to host our festival in 5K on September the 29th, closing Mickey Mantle Drive. We will have our festival activities inside the Chickasaw Brooktown Ballpark.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions? If not, Councilman Cooper?
It is with great pleasure that I move for adoption.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. Have a great event. And then we've got item 6B, Revocable Right-of-Way Use Permit with the Tri OKC to hold the Lake Stanley Draper Duathlon, July 22nd, West Stanley Draper Drive. Do we have anyone here to speak on this? If not, Councilman Stone?
Yeah, I can tell you, Lake Draper is just looking beautiful right now. A little bit of construction going on with new trails going in out there, but it's still going to be really nice. I won't be competing in this event, but I would certainly make a motion for its approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for item 6B. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and there are a few items here, items A through G, and I would entertain a motion.
Move the items.
We've got a motion and a second to pass all the items at once. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will now adjourn the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, and we have two items here, and I would entertain a motion.
Move the items.
We've got a motion and a second for the items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then we will adjourn OCPPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and we have two items here. Is there a motion?
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second to move the items. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the city council, where we will find ourselves at item seven, the consent docket.
Move the items subject to individual consideration.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the items. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out? I know that there's a presentation on AM.
That's correct.
And then also, I see Tricia Everest here, who would be in relative to AH, I believe. Would you like to speak on that?
Thank you, Mayor Holt.
And if so, please take that. Please, please, please.
Good morning, Councilman Mayor. My name is Tricia Everest. I reside at 1717 Huntington Avenue. I want to thank you all. Item AK includes some partial monies that you provide for the Executive Director of Palomar, and we are very proud of our partnership with you and the city. I want you to know that we have had Missouri, Kansas, and Colorado all have come to be able to see what we're doing differently, and what we're doing differently is our partnership with you all. We have had Canadian County and Cleveland County come to replicate the services of the Family Justice Center as well, and Kim has been asked to go across the country and to be able to promote not only what we're doing, but why we're doing it so well. We've had over a year and a half of services, will be August 2nd. As of today, we've had 11,482 client visits of 4,000, roughly 37 unique clients, so they're coming back multiple times, and I won't even have to tell you how many children we've seen. So, I appreciate it, and thank you, and thank you for this opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you for all your due, Tricia, and this is in reference, I misspoke a moment ago, this is in reference to AK1 that she was just speaking, so thank you. Are there any other items that members of the council want to pull out?
Mayor, I just want to comment, and I'm very happy to see that that's partial funding to help. That's not the full salary, which I was concerned about.
Very good. Are there any other items other than AM that anyone from the council would like to pull out and discuss?
I did have a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. I just want to mention that items under 7E, 1 through 4, 7Z, and 7AH.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then, we'll take them in order. Meg, why don't you go ahead with item 7E?
Sure, I'll be very brief on these. I just wanted to mention, these are a couple of professional service agreements with some of our neighborhoods undergoing revitalization, Old Capitol Hill, Paseo Arts Association, the Plaza District, and Uptown 23rd. And I see some of our executive directors here, and I really just wanted to recognize all of the staff of each of these districts for all the hard work they do. They add so much to the character and fabric of our city, and we're very grateful. Appreciate it very much, and thanks for coming down this morning. Item 7Z is our contract with the youth council, and I thought we should just take this opportunity to thank Debbie Martin for all the work she does. This is our 16th class that we'll be having of youth council members. I've had the privilege of working with 11 of those, and they're such bright, incredible students. And, you know, our objective is to teach them about the inner workings of the city and to hope that whether or not they stay here for college, they'll come back and raise families and start businesses, and it's happening, and so we're really proud of that. Debbie and Leadership Oklahoma City, who provides the umbrella for the program, are to be thanked for that opportunity that our young people have. And item 7H is a resolution that accepts a donation from Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated, and I'm not sure I see anybody here from DOKC Initiatives, but you all may recall that they applied for a grant last year and were the successful recipient of $228,000 for a Heart of the Community grant that was funded through Southwest Airlines. And construction is underway at Kerr Park to build shade facilities, some of the things that we're missing in activating that park. And so we're putting in some activities. There's a ping-pong table. There'll be seating and chairs so that people can bring their lunches out, and there'll be this covered shade structure. They've worked very closely with Doug Cupper and his team at the Parks Department, and I think it will really help activate that wonderful little pocket park right behind the Sandridge Building. So, that is it.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no other items that anyone wants to discuss, I think now we are ready for Jason's presentation on AM.
We have an opportunity to present a build grant application of formerly the Tiger Grants, the federal transportation grants, and Jason is going to give us a presentation on our grant application this morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The handout that I provided to you is our draft grant application for the build grant, and I'm here this morning to provide you with some additional information on item 7AM, of course, and that is the Better Utilizing Investment to Leverage Development Grant for the Northwest Multimodal Corridor. So, as Mr. Couch said, it's the build grant, which basically replaces the Tiger Program. I would like to mention that, as we get started with the presentation, that the grant application and the project is really a joint effort between Embark Planning and Public Works, ACOG, and OU's Institute for Quality Communities have also been great planning partners, but I do appreciate all the support that Planning and Public Works have provided in the application that's before you. So, looking at the next slide, I'm talking a little bit about the build grant. It is, again, a replacement for the Tiger Program. There's about $1.5 billion in discretionary grant funds, so the good news is that's about three times the amount that was in the last Tiger, so there's certainly more funding to go around. One thing with the build grant program, just like the Tiger, though, is it's not specifically a transit grant. It's really for improving our nation's surface transportation, so bridges, roads, highways, all of those type of projects compete, just like transit projects, such as the one that we have before you today. The maximum award for any grant is, or I should say for any project, is $25 million, and then no state can receive more than $150 million of that total. One interesting part of the build grant is they have determined that 30% would go to rural areas, so that does, you know, shrink a bit the total amount available for an urban area to compete, such as ours. So, as we think about the project that we've submitted for this build grant, it is the Northwest Multimodal Corridor Concept Plan, and it really goes back to our 2005 Fixed Guideway Study, and I know that you have seen this map before, but I always like to take an opportunity to revisit it when we can. Looking at the map here, again, this was a study done back in 2005 that kind of envisioned what the future of transit in Oklahoma City could look like. The brown lines on the map are an enhanced bus network. The blue lines on the map are commuter rail between Edmund Norman, Oklahoma City, Midwest City. The red in the very center of the map is a downtown circulator, and then the green lines are bus rapid transit corridors that were identified. And the reason I like to go back and look at this map is because really when you think about where we're at today, between the city and the Central Oklahoma Transportation Parking Authority, other stakeholders in the community working towards improving transit, we've actually made a lot of progress in this area. You think about 2013, 2014, when we improved our bus system, we realigned our routes, certainly not the coverage and service area that's envisioned in this particular map, but we did make significant improvements to our bus system. Following that, in 2015, ACOG led the Central OK Go Commuter Corridor Study, so we have a locally preferred alternative identified for that commuter rail that you see here. And then, of course, we have to mention the Oklahoma City Streetcar. That's the solution to the downtown circulator that's identified in this map, and so now it's time to begin working in addressing some of those bus rapid transit corridors. And the first one that we're going to look at, in terms of the planning process and trying to move it forward, is the Northwest Corridor. This is essentially Classen Boulevard coming out of downtown to Northwest Expressway, and then Northwest Expressway on out to Meridian. Now, the Fixed Guideway Plan actually has this corridor going all the way out to council and to the turnpike with this initial kind of Phase 1 of the corridor planning. We're looking at going out to Meridian, which is the densest area, as you can imagine, along that corridor. So, what does a corridor have to offer? Why would we look at this corridor over others? Well, first of all, again, we examined it back in 2016 with our concept plan. The corridor plan itself, although we talked mainly about enhanced transit and bus rapid transit as being the mode, we certainly also need to emphasize the pedestrian and bicycle connections that come along with improving this corridor for bus rapid transit. And I say that because with bus rapid transit along this corridor, you have to have people be able to access it, right? And we know that particularly along the Northwest Expressway, it's very difficult for a pedestrian or a cyclist to navigate along that highway, really, at all. And so, again, although we're focusing a lot on the bus rapid transit, I think it's important to note that in the grant application, and you'll see within some of the budget, there's a lot of improvements for pedestrian and cyclists, whether it be sidewalks, whether it be pedestrian crossings, ADA curb cuts and such. So, in addition, along the corridor, some of the things that make this corridor prime for BRT is, first of all, the density, but then even along the corridor, there's access to healthcare. You know, there's three major hospitals when you think of Integris and St. Anthony's, and then Deaconess is actually within that quarter-mile walk shed identified on the map. There are three supermarkets within the quarter-mile walk shed, an additional one within a half a mile walk shed. Of course, Penn Square Mall and Belle Isle Station are two primary shopping locations, although there is ample shopping opportunities along the corridor. Oklahoma City University is within a half a mile of this corridor with a direct connection to Route 23, and then, as you can see, about a third of the Embark bus routes cross this corridor at one point or another, allowing access to that BRT without necessarily having to come and transfer at the transit center. So, looking at the corridor for those reasons, but then also just transit in general, we know that transit works where there's density, right? And so, this is a heat map here showing employment density in Oklahoma City, and you may have seen this before, but obviously by overlaying the corridor on the employment density, you can see that the corridor serves some of the most dense areas of employment in Oklahoma City. And then looking at the next slide, this is population density, and of course, serves areas that are highly populated. So, in terms of what kind of improvements might be made with this project, we've got a couple of renderings that IQC worked on for us. The first one here is Northwest Expressway and Independence. So, if you can kind of envision that intersection now, imagine, you know, trying to cross the Northwest Expressway as a pedestrian, pretty difficult. What this project will do is look at ways, as I mentioned, to improve that pedestrian and cyclist accessibility, and then add bus rapid transit. So, one way to do it would be, as is shown in this rendering here, basically improve the pedestrian crossings with, you know, highly visible striping. You would add pedestrian signals to allow pedestrians to cross. You notice you could configure the medians there to have what we would consider to be a pedestrian refuge, you know, a place for them to stop as the signals progress. And then, of course, the sidewalks and the ADA accessibility to the enhanced bus stop platforms. With any bus rapid transit project, the bus stop platforms themselves are actually much more significant than what you see on just local bus. They're actually more similar to what you would see at a streetcar platform, right, where you can actually purchase your fare media at the platform itself. There's usually arrival, you know, real-time arrival information at the stop platforms. And then also, just finishing up, looking at this rendering here, you'll notice these bus-only lanes, and so this is actually taking the Northwest Expressway as it's configured, putting bus pullouts or cutouts in some of the green space or median area. And what that does, it allows a place for the bus to pull over safely, for customers, passengers to safely board and alight, and traffic can continue to move. And then the way we can help the bus move efficiently through that traffic is through a queue jump lane. And so if you'll look at where the bus is pictured here, you'll notice it's kind of in its own dedicated pullout, and through signalization, we can give that bus a priority light so that it has an opportunity to move, begin moving forward before the rest of the traffic, and then merge back into the lane. So, that's kind of how that works. That's just kind of one solution, one concept that you could see much more pedestrian-friendly, and a way to actually provide transit on the Northwest Expressway. We can't do that now with the way it's configured. The next rendering I wanted to show you, again, just to give you an example of the types of things we're looking at in the project, is Northwest 23rd and Classen. And so, just to orient you to the slide, I should have done that on the other one. Basically, you have Classen here moving left to right on your slide, and then 23rd moving top to bottom. But here, rather than dedicated queue jump lanes for buses, what we've done is we've took the far right lane of Classen Boulevard, and we've turned that into a bus-only and right-turn-only lane. Again, being able to use some of that signal priority that would allow the bus to get ahead of the traffic. Again, you can see enhanced stop platforms along with improved pedestrian crossings. So, again, these are just a couple of renderings of the type of things that we're looking at. Again, it's really in the concept stage. There'll be additional planning and preliminary engineering that will need to be done, but we have lots of ideas, again, working with Planning and Public Works on how to improve the corridor. So, the next slide here will give you an idea of the proposed budget, and we'll start with the top chart and table there. The total budget is just under $29 million. We're looking at about a 50% build contribution or federal contribution, and about a 50% local contribution. And what that does is that, in our opinion, makes it a competitive, a very, you know, competitive match. You can see the funding sources there in terms of the local match, primarily geo-bonds, some of the Better Streets, Safer City funding. And again, I'll just mention that there were some pedestrian priority areas that have been identified in the Bike Walk OKC Plan that are part of this project, so that's incorporated with some of that Better Streets, Safer City funding. Now, if the program moves forward, that will obviously have to be approved by that committee, but again, for grant application and conceptual purposes, we've included those projects. We have some other federal grant dollars, and then some capital reserves from COPPA to finish out the funding sources. And then in terms of the uses, looking down at the pie chart here on the, kind of the bottom left, you can see that the vehicles would comprise about $5.4 million of the overall budget. Stations and park-and-rides would be $5.8 million, and I did fail to mention park-and-rides when we were looking at the corridor. We have identified a few park-and-ride locations, and we do believe that's going to be very important to the success of the corridor in allowing people to be able to park somewhere along the corridor and take the bus rapid transit into downtown. Signal improvements at $5.6, and then again, the emphasis on pedestrian and bike infrastructure at almost $7 million of the total project, and then the final number there of $5 million is our A and E contingency. So, again, just a high-level review of the grant application. Again, a lot of this is based off of a concept plan. We look forward to moving into the next phases, and be glad to answer any questions on the application.
You mentioned a dedicated bus lane on Classen Boulevard and also dedicated for right-turn-only. Are there any other streets that you're contemplating dedicated bus lanes at this time?
No, just, I mean, the corridor itself is basically just Classen and Northwest Expressway, so just Classen. And again, it would be for right-turning automobiles and bus.
Just Classen?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
What actually classifies this as, because I'm still a little unclear, bus rapid transit as opposed to just a normal bus route?
Yeah, great. Thank you for the question. So, bus rapid transit is, well, as it implies, it's a much more rapid frequency than what a typical local bus route is. So, for this particular project, we're looking at anywhere from 12 to 15-minute frequencies, using six different, I'm sorry, five vehicles to serve that corridor. In addition, the vehicles themselves are usually a little, I mean, they're nicer, they've got a little more modern look than what just a typical local bus would have. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're the longer 60-foot articulated buses like that were in the rendering. That's a possibility, but it's usually an upgraded vehicle as well. And then, like I said, the stop platforms are much more complete than what you see for just a local bus stop, you know. Again, I would compare it to kind of what we're seeing with the streetcar platforms.
So, our normal bus routes have about a 30-minute frequency, and the bus rapid transit has 12 to 15 minutes?
That's correct. Yep, that's the main difference. And trying to get it, trying to help it move, help the route move more efficiently through traffic with technology such as traffic signal priority versus, you know, local bus is just pretty much in the mix with automobiles.
Okay.
Jason, wouldn't there possibly be fewer stops along the way with a rapid transit?
Yeah, that's actually another, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Jason, I mean, I think it's fair to say that BRT and its feel is, it feels a lot closer to rail. It's not, and therefore, it's a lot cheaper, but it has that feel, right, in terms of its frequency, its speed, its being even with the curb, all of those elements, right?
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. It's very comparable to like a light-rail corridor, although you don't have the permanency of the actual rail being embedded in the street. It is a significant investment in the platforms and the traffic signal priority, in some cases, the dedicated lanes. So, you still have a lot of that permanency with bus rapid transit that a lot of people compare light rail to.
And this has basically been a part of our kind of master plan for at least 12, 13 years, right? As we've been working through the study, the Fixed Guideway Study of '05, '06.
That's right, yeah, at least going back to 2005.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, and the vehicles being purchased, would they be natural gas?
That's our, that's the option we're looking at right now, yes. Yeah. In fact, it's definitely be alternative fuel propulsion, looking for natural gas.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason on this topic? Okay, thank you. All right, well, I think that concludes what I was aware of in regards to presentations for items under the consent docket. Is there anything else anybody wants to pull out? Okay, well, we already had a motion and a second, so no further discussion on the items. We'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. All right, moving on to the very brief concurrence docket, item 8A. Is there a motion?
If this is subject to any consideration.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Is there anything anybody wants to say about item 8A? Seeing no discussion, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we move on to items nine, items requiring separate votes. And we have item A, ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval. There is item 9A1, an ABC2 restaurant with alcohol district overlaying the I-2 district currently at 1045 South Meridian Avenue. Councilman McAtee.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Come forward, please, ma'am. This is a proposed project for the Meridian Hospitality District. If you would give your name and address and then share very briefly what you're intending to do on this property.
Okay, my name is Kisuuk Metchon, K-I-S-U-K, Metchon, and I reside in Oklahoma City on southwest side. And the location is 1045 South Meridian. And my plan is to open a bar and the Asian Fusion Restaurant. And because, the reason I thought about the Asian Fusion Restaurant is because we do not have, the Meridian, as you all know, it's an industrial district, but however, we do not have any Asian Fusion restaurants on that side nor west side of the street. So, that is my plan.
This was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission. Unless the council has any further questions, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions for the applicant? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we've got item 9A2. This is an ABC3 overlay on the DTD1 Transitional District at 1121 North Walker. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you, Mayor. Is the applicant here? Great, good morning. This is an exciting new retail opportunity on Walker in the Plaza Court Building called Barkeep. You want to tell us a little bit about it?
My name's Randy Malone. I represent the owner, 209 Southwest 89, Suite F. This--
If you wouldn't mind pulling that microphone a little closer to you.
There you go.
The concept is, this is a small shop. It's about 1,100 square feet. The owner's idea is to sell high-end bar supplies for mixers, things like that. And the reason we are seeking a liquor license is in case, for the reason that if a customer wants to try the real thing, they can. That's the idea.
Well, it looks like a really fun idea in a very busy part of town. So, we're excited to welcome Barkeep to Midtown. I would move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions for the applicant or any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. And we've got item 9A3, 5907 Ranger Lane, moving from single-family R1 to I-2 moderate industrial. Councilman McAtee.
Second. Is the applicant present? Bob, are you there? This was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission?
Yes, it's in an area with a lot of our existing I-2 zoning. It was consistent with the plan.
And really, you could look at this as a cleanup to get things consistent in the area. The area's going a different direction than R1.
That's correct.
I'd move for approval unless the council has some questions.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. On to 9A4. This is at 3540 East Hefner Road, moving from AA to PUD 1674. Councilman Cooper.
Yeah, is the applicant here for 1674?
David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. I believe Councilman Stonecypher is going to recuse himself on this. This is Brett Tucker.
I'm sure he appreciates the reminder. Thank you, Mr. Box.
Can you give us your name and address and tell us a little bit?
Sure. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. Counsel for the applicant. Also with me is Tim Johnson and Mark Zitzel with Johnson Associates, who serve as the planner and civil engineer for this project. This is a large PUD at Hefner and I-35. This is a PUD that was filed, and then protest was received, and so, at that time, I was retained. This is a PUD that has underseen a lot of changes from its original iteration. Could the, the image you see on your screen, what you see in red was originally included in the PUD. So, originally, the PUD went all the way to Hefner Road and all the way to the West Property Line. Some of the neighbors expressed some concern. The neighbors primarily reside north of Hefner Road, the concern being potential truck traffic from this site onto Hefner Road. So, what we did was, we removed the piece in red from the PUD, so we have now eliminated any ability of this site to access Hefner Road. In so doing, we left that land as AA agricultural. You can tell there's a significant number of trees there, there's a creek that runs through it, so it'll serve as a significant buffer from our site to any neighbors to the north that had concerns. In addition, we agreed to some modifications as to where the trucks could be parked. The concern was if trucks were parked on the north side, potentially, there would be an impact to the neighbors, so we agreed that there were no, no truck parking can occur on the north side. I do think it's important to get some context for where this site is located. Again, it's Hefner and I-35. It was suggested by some at the Planning Commission that this was more of a residential area, not an industrial area. I take it everyone has driven I-35 around Hefner Road and would agree with me that this is perhaps the largest grouping of industrial warehouses that we have in the city. If you consider Hefner and I-35 an intersection, if you look at the northeast corner of the intersection, there's a PUD 701. 701 contains six separate, large-scale industrial warehouses. It was also mentioned that perhaps our PUD, which is right here, intrudes further west of I-35 than any other industrial zoning. So, what we did was, we created this image here. The blue lines represent how far industrial development has pushed past I-35. You can tell based upon this blue line that our PUD and the proposed industrial use is in keeping with other industrial users up and down I-35. Specifically, immediately south of our site, here's our site here, immediately south of our site is the large U.S. Foods warehouse. This image here before you shows you the different distances that we are from the closest residences. So, as you can see, we are, the people that have protested, we are in excess of 1,000 feet from them. And if you think about what is between us and them within that 1,000 feet, it's significant tree coverage. Again, if we go back to what we originally did and removed that red shaded area and left it natural in its AA zoning, what we have from the proposed building is approximately 500 feet to our border. You will also note that there was a letter from the Chamber signed by Roy Williams back on May 9th in your packet. But what you'll see now is a new letter dated July 11th. Initially, the Chamber had submitted a letter in which they indicated some concern perhaps for this development. But what you see in the letter that should have been in your packet dated July 11th from Mr. Roy Williams, President and CEO of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, is he now calls this PUD a, quote, "win-win," and that, quote, "it appears to resolve many, if not most all, of the previous issues, specifically removing the heavy industrial use." In addition, the use unit that allows flammable store, outdoor flammable liquid storage has been reduced to an accessory use to any large-scale operator rather than a free independent use. Staff did recommend approval. It is consistent and compatible with the comprehensive plan. It was recommended for approval unanimously by the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. This is simply an industrial development in the middle of an industrialized area at I-35 and Hefner. We would ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I've heard a number of concerns about flooding in the area. Can you tell me what has been done on the site?
Sure. So, we're downhill, and we have required, is detention required here? Detention's not required, but we've required in the PUD a detention to be on-site. So, we're downhill. We do require detention despite not being in a basin that requires it by the city.
David, I think if I just make a quick comment, you know, we say it's simply an industrial development in an industrial area, but directly across the street from residential.
Well, I mean, it's no closer to residential than the U.S. Foods. The, I mean, the Frontier City is closer. So, directly across the street, I mean, we are over 1,000 feet away. So, depends on how you define directly across the street, but perhaps under that--
And I think simply is, you know, just maybe a little bit of an overstatement. There is one comment in the TEs that says that the language will preserve the remaining upland forest to the greatest extent possible. What does that mean to you?
Yeah, so, within the development, as we develop it, we have to preserve what we can. There is some tree coverage that remains, so to the greatest extent possible, as it's close to and adjacent to the stream that runs through there, we'll have to maintain that as it would allow with our development.
And I just, you and I, you know, had a chance to visit, I just would like to get on the record that some of those residents would have preferred that there be some restriction on the hours of operation in terms of trucks backing in and backing out and the potential noise. You know, they certainly are aware that we have noise ordinances, and if there's an issue--
Sure.
--they probably can be addressed that way. But I just want to be sure to mention that we very much, I know they appreciate how much you worked to come to this compromise. There are still some issues that remain--
Sure.
--unresolved, and that's normal.
Yeah, and we can't agree to our restrictions. We'd be the only warehouse that I'm aware of with a limitation on the hours. We do believe that any noise concerns are addressed, like you mentioned, not only with the noise ordinance, but the significant distance that we are away and the significant tree coverage and setback that we have put into the PUD.
Right, I appreciate it.
David, you mentioned that there was a restriction on, I guess, docking to the north. Isn't there also restrictions to docking also on the west?
Yes.
So, on the west, they've restricted really to the south and to the east having docking, so that moves it away from. And also lighting, I believe, also--
Yes, and lighting.
Okay.
On the north side, correct.
Council, are there any, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Nope. No?
Okay. I move for adoption.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone here to speak? Okay. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 9A5. This is at 6601 Highway 152, moving from PUD 1601 to PUD 1683. Councilman McAtee.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If you would, Mark, give the council an overview of where we stand right now and what this change will be and what your future is.
If you wouldn't mind, starting with your name and address.
I'm sorry.
If you wouldn't mind, starting with your name and address.
Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morgan Road. Grubbs Consulting on behalf of the applicant. What you have before you is just a revised PUD from the existing PUD. It was, the existing PUD zoned it for a duplex development. That the use will remain the same. The only change within this PUD is to add to the building facade Hardy Board as an approved siding in the building facade. And Planning Commission recommended approval. We've agreed to the TEs. We had asked for your approval.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
I know of no protests. With the Planning Commission's unanimous approval, I'd also vote to approve it, so I move to reapprove this.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Seeing no one interested in speaking and any discussion on the council, seeing none, we will cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A6 at 1338 Northwest 16th Street, moving from R1 to S.PUD 1056. Councilwoman Salier.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This, there were no protests at the Planning Commission. This was recommended for approval. The purpose is to build two single-family dwellings on 16th Street. Is the applicant here? Hello, Tim?
Good morning, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates here on behalf of the applicant. As you mentioned, it was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. It was deferred at one time at the Planning Commission because there was discussion about the location of the driveways. And we met with the traffic staff, and they concurred that this was the safest location, plus it allowed for the drives to serve the rear of the property, allowing for parking in the back as the spud outlines.
Which is the reason it was removed from the TEs in its present location. Okay, I didn't quite understand that. But otherwise, all of the TEs have been agreed to by the applicant. All right. Given that, I move approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we are on item 9B. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing an alleyway north of 141 Northeast 13th Street. Councilman Cooper.
This is closing an alleyway for really a historic building, and I'm excited about seeing the progress that's going on with this. There were no protests, I don't believe. Anyone signed up to speak? If not, I move for adoption.
Second.
Is this the, what is this, the Walcourt?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the Walcourt building, and it's directly behind that. It ends, and there it ends right into the actual I-235.
Great, okay. Any discussion? We've got a motion and a second. We'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9C was deferred to October 23rd, so we move on to item 9D. This is a public hearing. This is the second of three steps in our process in when we amend our ordinances. And so, this is regarding the ordinance related to the zoning and planning code and the general schedule of fees amending Chapter 59 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code as detailed in a full page of sections here on Page 14 of the agenda. There is no business other than to have a public hearing today. Is there anyone here to speak on item 9D? Seeing none, we will move on to item 9E. This is also a public hearing regarding ordinances relating to the general schedule of fees amending Article 5 of Title 38 of Chapter 60 of our municipal code as detailed here under item 9E. This is also just a public hearing, the second of our three steps in this process. Is there anyone here to speak on item 9E? Okay, well, then, we will move on to item 9F1. This is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here to speak? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on item 9F2, the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Yes, of course.
Really relative to this item and the subsequent one in 9G. A number of these properties are along Linwood Boulevard, and, you know, I just kind of want everybody to know, particularly property owners along Linwood, that, you know, this is a very significant corridor into downtown and is beginning to receive a lot of-- to receive a lot of interest and some new development occurring. And we are going to be paying a lot of attention to code enforcement issues. And I think this is a little bit of a notice that we are doing so. And so we've got 1315 Linwood, we've got 1111 Linwood, and, you know, they're just a series of properties that do not meet our standards and need to be brought up.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilwomen. So we've got a motion and a second on 9F2, the resolution. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passed unanimously. And now we are on item 9G1. This is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures on the list, absent the ones that the city manager struck earlier. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any of these items? Yes, it looks like we do. Is this, are you Jeff Penner?
No, I'm James Matthews. I'm talking about G1B and H1B, which is 1521 North Drexel.
G1B, and then this item, the same address also pops up under H? Okay. Okay. Well, go ahead, sir. Have you listed your name and address?
James Matthews, 3524 Northwest 50th Street. I represent the LLC that owns an adjoining piece of property at 1515 North Drexel. We have initiated litigation for private nuisance and on July 10th obtained a restraining order from Judge Davis, which allowed us to essentially secure the property, clean it up, bring it consistent with the requirements of the city. We have, in our view, secured the property at this point. We had a discussion yesterday with Mr. Bumpus about that. We had, I understand the inspector's coming out today and we expect that it'll be stricken from the docket as secured after that inspection. We suggest a deferral of 30 days on that and also on H1B.
Okay. Charles, do you want to respond?
It really wouldn't be necessary. I mean, if it's secured and we check it, we just close the case and remove it, so it's no need to remove it. I mean, we spoke to some of the, I believe, somebody yesterday, and Danny did also about this, and if it's secured and they have some time to secure it, even if it's not all secured, they still have time to secure it. At that point, we would close. There's no reason for a deferral.
I've actually had a number of complaints about this property from, not even just from neighbors, but from somebody that travels this way to work every day and called to say, you know, what a terrible hazard it was. So, you know, as long as you stay in contact with Charles and Danny, there is no reason for us to remove it. You've got plenty of time and I think I would leave it on.
So Councilwoman and Charles, you're basically saying there's no penalty for him being on this list today? I mean, it just kind of...
It just requires that the work be done timely. And if it's not, there are consequences, but it will be. And as long as we, you know, there's, as long as you remain in constant contact with these guys, everything will be fine.
Okay. All right. Well, very good. Thank you, sir. I think, unless there's a motion pending, I think we will keep the item on. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak under any of these items? It looks like maybe someone did sign up. Francis?
Yes.
Item 9G1L. And this, that's for Mr. Penner? Jeff Penner? Oh. A little out of context here.
No problem. Jeff Penner, 1496 East Interstate Drive, Norman, Oklahoma. Mayor Holtz, the members of the council, thank you for letting me to discuss this issue with you. This involves what's known as the lumberyard down off Oklahoma Boulevard and E.K. Gaylord, the Shields area. I'm speaking on behalf of the property owners, Fred Mazahari and Champ Patel. The city did send timely notice to us. It came to our office and unfortunately sat on the desk of one of our employees that's fighting cancer right now and her attendance is hit and miss. So at 4:30 yesterday, this came to Champ's attention, and of course, he's the type of businessman that takes care of business immediately. Wasn't time for us to call and speak with people about trying to get this stricken, so he asked that I come and speak to you today and assure you that this will be taken care of. In fact, what he would like to do, we have kind of a homeless situation that has set up there, and we know that securing this type of structure is not going to work. And while I'm here, I'll have to take a minute and just say, our homeless situation in this city is not improving, in my opinion. Their lack of respect for law enforcement, the concerns they cause with our customers, but again, that's a discussion for another day. But concerning this, we know that we can't secure this. No matter how much plywood we use, no matter what we do, we're not going to be able to secure that. So we would like to ask for 60 days and we would like to just tear these buildings down. So that's what I'm here to ask your consideration today, and I respectfully thank you for that consideration.
Okay, thank you. I defer to Councilman Cooper on that.
I think that it's a move in the right direction, as far as I'm concerned. And if they're willing to tear it down, can we delay for 60 days or 30 days enough? What is the normal procedure practice?
Yeah, what would be an appropriate deferral?
Four weeks and then we can check on the status would be a good thing to do, I think.
30 days, so...
Well, four...
Four weeks.
To the August 14th meeting?
Okay.
We'll receive a bid today, I think, from Midwest Wrecking. So if nothing else, we'll be moving in that direction and then I'll be sure that we stay in touch with the city and you'll at least see the progress moving forward. But we'll try to do this as promptly as we can.
So we'll continue and hear from you by August 14th?
Yes, sir.
We'll need a motion and a vote on that, right? Yeah, so you move?
I would like to move, yeah.
Francis, can he move it for the items under, because this shows up at both G1 and H1? Can he move it? Do I need two votes?
Separate.
Okay, all right. We'll handle H1 in a minute then. All right, so the motion is to defer item G1L to the August 14th council meeting. We've got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. The item is deferred. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I also wanted to mention, under this category, number item G on here is the Board of Education?
Which where?
Board of Education property. Item G is 2402 South Pennsylvania.
Really? Interesting. Okay. Okay.
Just want to make that note as well.
Okay. We also have someone who's signed up to speak for item 9G1AC, Linda Teeter and Roxanna Kimble. Please feel free to come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Linda Teeter. Roxanna stepped out for a minute. My address is 1305 Regency Boulevard, Moore, Oklahoma.
Feel free to make your comments.
Okay. On this house, it was my mother's and she passed away in February. This house has not been abandoned. Yes, it was unsecured and we've been working on it. Yesterday, we put up two new doors, we put in a lot of new glass panes, and we're wanting an extension of 30 days to finish it. It's been cleaned up, the property is clean. It's just taken us a little longer to get all the windows put back in because just about every window was broken out after my mother was passing.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
So you've done some of the work already?
Yes, we have.
Charles, have we been by to see it or do we know?
This is a picture that was just taken on, I believe, that ninth.
Oh, I see, okay.
There's not a lot of work that's been done.
All right.
It's in pretty bad shape.
So as I said earlier, what we'd like to do typically in these cases, if you will get Charles's information and stay in touch with him about the work you're doing, as long as you are moving forward and the house is secured and the work's happening, they will go ahead and drop the case. But to leave it on this agenda is helpful for us to be able to track it.
Oh, that's fine.
So he'll be happy to meet with you outside and he'll give you his phone number and contact information.
Yeah, we did a lot of the work since, I mean, if you look at the front, you can tell the front was secured at the time.
And I'm terribly sorry for your loss. And we certainly understand that these things happen.
It just took a while to get, become executor of her estate where we could actually go in and do some work on the property.
Right, and we understand that, but hope you understand that it's our job to make sure that the public is safe and that you don't end up with a situation where we've got, you know, potentially vagrants living in it or something. So this is just a way for us to be able to monitor a little bit more carefully those properties that have been reported to us.
The house is also on the abandoned list on the HS, and the house has never been abandoned.
Well, there's specific criteria related to that in terms of the electricity being turned off and the water being turned off.
Water's on, electricity's on, gas is on. We had some, we had my nephew living there trying to keep vagrants out. So up until the ninth or the third, we had my nephew living there until...
Well, Charles, why would it have been...
We'll explain it to her, how she gets off of it and stuff.
Okay. Well, if you'll just work with Charles, everything will be fine. As long as you do the work, all will be good.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone else signed up to speak? Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on any of the items under G1? I don't know that we've ever obtained a motion in a second. Okay, I would entertain a motion in a second.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. This is, of course, this is for item G2, the resolution declaring the structures are unsecured. Obviously, that exempts the items that the city manager previously deferred, plus the item that we voted on to defer, G1L. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That was the busiest unsecured structures agenda I've ever presided over. Granted, it's only been three months. Okay. 9H1.
Get ready.
This is the public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. I think, why not right off the bat, Councilman Cooper, before I forget, would you like to move to defer item 9HH to August 14th?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. No discussion on that item. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That item is deferred, as well as the items that the city manager previously mentioned. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of the items under 9H1? Has anyone signed up to speak? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for item 9H2, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Now we are on item 9I1. This is the public hearing regarding the resolution approving the 2018-2019 Consolidated Plan, Fourth Action Year Plan. I believe there is a presentation by Chris Varga. I might ask again after he's done if there's anyone here who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion, but let's go ahead and go to Chris.
Great. Good morning. This item relates to our fourth-year action plan under our five-year consolidated plan with HUD. The five-year plan is required for the city to receive formula grant funding, and by formula grant are the certain grants that we are entitled to from HUD based on particular demographics. They're not competitive plans. Can you get the notes page off, Randy? Slideshow? There we go. There, I'm happy now. So each year, we have to submit an action plan that outlines how we plan to spend the money and our priorities for the year that's consistent with our five-year plan and allows opportunity for public input into the process. Our formula grants are the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, that's our largest grant, our Home Investments Partnership Programs Grant, our Emergency Solutions Grant, and our Housing for Persons with AIDS. So this plan, again, will describe the activities to be funded. It's really kind of our budget for the upcoming year. Go ahead. We have a number of HUD-financed activities in Oklahoma City. A lot of them relate to housing, housing rehab, and new housing development, home buyer assistance through our down payment assistance programs, community development activities such as neighborhood revitalization. We do have some economic development activities under the consolidated plan, and we also provide homeless assistance. Our funding allocations for this year were thankfully, went up just a little bit, and after a hard congressional year where the CDBG and home programs were under attack and the federal wanted to, some of the feds would like to have done away with them this year, but unfortunately, they did not do away with them, and in fact, we got a slight increase in funding. So overall, we got almost half a million dollars more in block grant and almost $700,000 more in home, $70,000 more in Hopla. So this year was a good, good funding year for us. The statutory, CDBG is, again, almost a $5 million grant. It's our largest grant and it's our most flexible grant, but it's got certain provisions. It's related to providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities, and it's really all about helping those with low and moderate incomes. Anything that we fund must either benefit low and moderate income persons, and 70% of our funding needs to go in this category. We can also use the money to prevent or eliminate slum and blight, and then also to meet an urgent community development need. It's usually a natural or man-made disaster of some sort. Fortunately, we haven't had one of those lately. When we talk about low mod income limits, we're, for this program and for HUD perspective, we're talking about those that make less than 80% of area median income as defined by HUD, and they recalculate this number each year. For the Oklahoma City proper, these numbers are, for a family of four, about $53,850. For a single person, the income level is $37,700. So our programs are targeted to those who make less than these income levels. This map just shows you, you can't see a lot of detail, but basically, the areas outlined in gold are census tracts that have our low mod income high percentages, 51% or higher, and you can see that for the most part, they're clustered in the core of the city. This slide is our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area that was determined probably 15 years ago and submitted to HUD as part of our consolidated planning process at that time. And it's a certain area that has been designated for a particular targeting of funds. We usually spend about 80% of our funds in this area because of its high prevalence of low and mod area population. Our CDBG activities that we fund, again, are variety, housing rehab, public facilities, some public services, special economic development activities. We can acquire and dispose of properties. There's a variety of things that can be done with block grant. Our focus, again, is on housing. There's over 255,000 persons in Oklahoma City making net less than 80% AMI category. Many of these are housing burdened, which means they pay more than 30% of their income on housing costs and utilities. There's a shortage of housing units, particularly in the very low income ranges that people can afford, and much of the housing that we see in this price range is substandard. So our Oklahoma City, our in-house rehabilitation programs focus on owner-operator, owner-occupied housing, and we have designated about $1 million for the upcoming year. Most of the block grant is for exterior improvements to address code violations. We are also, again, dedicating money to the Oklahoma City Housing Authority for them to provide improvements on a number of their units and upgrades. Emergency home repairs, typically, we've been giving $581,000 to this per year. Community Action Agency runs this program for us. We have... Uh, we have proposed to increase that by $100,000 this year in hopes that we can get some, uh, more emergency home repairs done in the new SNI areas. Uh, basically, this would be roofing, plumbing, electricity, sewer, urgent needs. Suitable living conditions, we are proposing $856,000 for the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative for the various programs that they have. We also propose $102,842 for the share fare program so that they can provide, uh, free or reduced, uh, taxi and bus fares for the homeless, the disabled, and seniors. We're proposing $60,000 for the STEAM After School Program, uh, at Eugene Fields. That was previously funded under the SNI program. And although we're getting out of that neighborhood, uh, we wish to provide some carryover money so that they can try and find other funding sources to implement that program. It's been very successful. Graffiti removal is done by Community Action Agency. Our program to secure abandoned properties, uh, $68,562. And as a HUD recipient, we are required to do certain things for fair housing requirements, to take complaints, to do investigations, to do housing testing. And we, uh, allocate that job to Metro Fair Housing Council of Oklahoma on our behalf. The Community Development Program for Public Facilities is currently, uh, proposed at over a million dollars. Uh, public facilities can include things that the city does, such as new infrastructure, streets, water and sewers, parks. It also includes nonprofit-owned facilities for persons with special needs, uh, such as the homeless. We've used some of this in the past for the CARE Center, Metro Better Living Center for the disabled. Current, uh, ongoing projects that were previously funded, the Kiwanis Head Start Project, the Metro Alliance, uh, First Step Rehabilitation Program. Uh, are building new men's apartments, sidewalks in the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative areas. Red Andrews Park, we have a public art project ongoing. And the new proposals for funding is the Healing Hands Community Health Center, who provides healthcare for the homeless. And a parks project for low mod income youth that's not yet fully defined.
Chris, um, if available, could these, some of these funds be used, say, for a low barrier shelter, for, for beds, um, with one of our partners?
Potentially so, yes.
Okay, and are all these dollars allocated?
They currently are.
Okay.
Unless we want to reallocate or look at it for next year, yeah. Economic opportunity, uh, again, with CDBG, you can offer Section 108 loans. We, uh, are currently reviewing 108 proposal from the First National Center. Okura gets slum and blight abatement funds that they have for a number of years for urban renewal completion and various activities, primarily in the Northeast. And revolving loan fund, we have a small business revolving loan fund that runs through the city. And we also provide small business training and assistance through Community Action Agency. The Home Investments Partnership Program is all about affordable housing. Uh, it's all about housing. So, we have a variety of housing activities that we do with this money. With the home funds, we are required to take 15% of the monies for a CHODO set aside, community housing development organizations who are nonprofits who have a mission to promote affordable housing. So, that money goes straight to them and the rest of it for other activities. Our Down Payment Assistance Program, we're proposing $500,000 this year for homeowners, low and moderate income home buyers. Our owner-occupied whole house rehab that we do with home. It's a terrible picture color. We, uh, actually go in, into the interior of homes and we're required with home funds to correct everything, uh, up to code when we go in there. So, these can be highly extensive and expensive projects. We have a 40% spending goal to, to provide, uh, to do those projects in the SNI areas. Our Affordable Housing Program, again, our ongoing projects at Metro Alliance's First Step Housing Project. And Okura has been doing a project for us. Their, this is three of their, uh, affordable homes that they've built out of a project of seven, plus two market homes that we're funding. Uh, and above and beyond that, we have $298,000 that is not allocated to any specific project yet for affordable housing. The CHODOs, again, they're set aside, is $372,000 this year. We have three certified CHODOs, Positively Paseo, Neighborhood Housing Services in Jefferson Park. And they are all focused on building affordable homes. Emergency Solutions Grant is, uh, primarily for homeless prevention and homeless rapid rehousing. Uh, basically, this, a lot of these funds go to people who are on the threat of homelessness to pay utility bills or mortgage bills and try and prevent that situation. We can also provide, uh, healthcare at shelter locations.
Okay, so this does say that these funds could be used for shelter operations?
Yes.
City Manager?
Yes.
Mr. Manager, shelter operations.
Yes, could be.
Are an available designation for the ESG grants.
Yes. And our partnering agencies, about a dozen of them, help implement those programs and provide those programs. And we really provide, uh, just management and oversight of those programs. What is funded through ESG is, uh, primarily done through a competitive process overseen by our Continuum of Care Board and, uh, under the purview of the Social Services Committee of Council. So, our housing opportunity for persons with AIDS is our last, uh, formula grant. It provides tenants base rental assistance and can provide, uh, medical assistance and other supportive needs for persons with AIDS and their families. That about summarizes our budget activities. Are there any questions?
Just another quick comment, if I could. I had an opportunity to go to the Winds House, uh, project, uh, last week on 17th Street. And it is an incredibly great, uh, renovation project. They own two homes, sort of back-to-back, on 17th and 18th Street. And, um, it was so nicely done and very impressive.
Great, they needed a lot of work, so we're pleased we could help.
Yeah, I was real.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, David, if I could just, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, keep it rolling, keep it rolling.
I just, um, always think it's important, my colleagues are, I'm, um, maybe repeating myself, which is a tradition around here. But, um, you know, we do talk a lot about, um, how limited our social services budget is out of the general fund. But, you know, we need to pair it with a conversation about how significant these dollars are. And I think quickly, I added this up, and it's about $8 million, um, just in these programs alone that we receive from the federal government. So, you know, there is a balance in all of this. And much of the funding that we do for programs that we would consider to be social service type issues come outside of that budget, whether it's youth services or, there are so many other things that we do. Um, I, I just want to be sure that, you know, I'm not, uh, just constantly hammering on the fact that we don't have enough dollars to spend. We don't, but this is an example of where we get a tremendous amount of pass-through dollars that do great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Chris? Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak under the public hearing portion in this agenda item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution. Got a motion in a second. This is on item 9I2. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Uh, moving on to item 9J. And items 9J and K relate to each other. And I should also state, this was noticed on Friday, but, uh, there was a typo, rather significant one, on item 9J. The $2,400,000 figure should have read $1,400,000. Um, and I believe Jason Fairbrush has a presentation.
Jason is here to go over, and he'll go over, uh, at the, if it's okay with the council, both J and K at the same time this morning.
Got it.
Yes, so good morning again, Mayor and Council. So, here to talk about, uh, the two items, um, and again, would like to be able to talk to them together because they obviously, obviously are linked with some moving pieces, uh, between all the parties that are involved. Um, item 9J is a approval of a memorandum of agreement to sell a parcel of land directly east of the Santa Fe parking garage that is bordered on the west by the BNSF railroad tracks, on the north by Second Street, on the south main, and then as far east as the Walnut Street Bridge. Um, that property is currently leased to Bricktown Parking Investors, where they operate a surface parking lot. And the memorandum of agreement indicates that the property will be sold to a limited liability company consisting of Bank First and Bricktown Parking Investors for $1.4 million or the appraised value. And we say the, or the appraised value because the $1.4 million is based off of an appraisal we had done in 2016. And so, obviously, we're having that property reappraised for a current value. That is included in the MOA. Um, item 9K is actually an approval of a memorandum of agreement to sell the Santa Fe parking garage for the appraised value of $22.5 million to Continental Resources and Bank First as tenants in common or the possibility of selling to a limited liability company comprised of those two companies or their affiliates. And so, that's the, the items that are before you. Um, if I could, I'd like to spend a little bit of time providing some additional information to council, just summarizing what is in those, uh, the council memos and the MOAs, and I think it would be informative to, uh, the public as well for a little bit of background. So, uh, back in August of 2017, the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority received an unsolicited offer from Continental Resources to purchase the Santa Fe parking garage for $15 million. So, keep in mind, Continental Resources, um, as a major downtown employer, um, they have hundreds of parkers within the COTPA system, but over 500 of those parkers are in the Cox Center, right? And so, looking into the future, knowing that we're having a new convention center coming online, um, and looking at future development plans, um, it's highly likely, almost certain, that that property where the Cox Center is located will be redeveloped. And so, for Continental Resources, their concern is, there's no certainty about the future of our parking in downtown as long as we're parking in the Cox, because that garage is probably gonna, gonna go away. So, that's really, uh, you know, their desire to, uh, purchase and own their own, uh, parking, and that's what led to that offer. Now, as we were in discussions with Continental, um, initially, uh, selling the entire garage was certainly, I mean, it just simply wasn't a consideration. Um, as a municipal parking authority and as the city, you know, we have, we have always made sure that there's adequate parking downtown for businesses and for visitors, particularly when the private sector does not provide that parking. And, um, the primary, um, reason we didn't want to sell the entire garage is because we knew that Cotter Tower, you know, the landmark office tower here downtown, they've relied for decades on the Santa Fe as a place for the tenants to park. So, with that in mind, um, we started working with Continental, um, to think about, um, turning the, the Santa Fe parking garage into a unit ownership estate, which basically allows us to condo the garage and sell a portion of it. So, we were having discussions about selling basically three floors of the garage to Continental, uh, providing that permanency, um, that, that they're looking for in order to anchor their corporate headquarters in downtown. And at the same time, retaining the other, uh, parking decks so that we could, uh, ensure there's adequate parking for Cotter Tower. We can honor our agreements with the Skirvin Hotel and just provide event parking and general, uh, and parking for the general public. So, that's really where we were. That was the plan that we were working towards. And we were very close to, to finalizing that plan and bringing something to, uh, COTPA and, and the city council to consider when, as we're all aware, um, recent events have led to, um, uh, us learning that Bank First is actually interested in purchasing the Cotter Tower, right? And so, as part of their proposed purchase of the tower, they too, looking to the future, want permanency for their, for their tenant parking. So, they too want to own parking. So, thus, the MOA is between, uh, Bank First and Continental to purchase the Santa Fe parking garage, giving, uh, permanent, uh, parking to, to both of those, um, entities. So, we thought about it with preserving parking for the tower being one of the main reasons we didn't initially want to sell the entire garage. Well, now with Bank First stepping in, that issue could basically be resolved. And that really left us with just three considerations, three main considerations when looking at, at selling the remainder of the garage. One is, what do we do about events? Because we know that Santa Fe Garage is used for event parking, particularly for Thunder Games. And there are some existing agreements between COTPA and tenants. Um, for example, um, University of Central Oklahoma, I mentioned our agreement with the Skirvin Hotel. And then, of course, parking for the public and those Santa Fe parkers that are not affiliated with Bank First and not affiliated with Continental. What do we do about that? And so, we feel like we have some, some very solid solutions, um, that will ensure each one of those issues is taken care of. If you'll look in the, and I'm sure you've noticed in the MOA, but the purchasers, the proposed purchasers of the Santa Fe parking garage have agreed to allow the garage to continue to be used for events. So, um, should be plenty of event space, particularly for the NBA games. Um, they have agreed to honor the existing agreements that COTPA has with our tenants, particularly the Skirvin. And as you know, the Skirvin has about 94 spaces in the Santa Fe that they use, uh, for their operations. So, that will continue on.
Jason, may I just clarify, does that also include Red Earth?
Yes.
That's in that parking space as well? So, we've got UCO, but Red Earth has their offices and their music.
Yes, Red Earth, as well as Viola, Violia, all of our existing tenants. Um, the proposed purchasers have agreed to, to take over those leases.
Great.
And so, then, that really leaves us with the, with the parking for the, for the public. And those parkers that are currently in the Santa Fe, not affiliated with Bank First or, um, Continental. And the way we solve that problem is, well, if you think about it, with over 500 parkers in the Cox Garage moving to Santa Fe with the purchase, with Continental purchasing the garage, that leaves ample parking spaces in the Cox Center for anybody that's displaced in the Santa Fe and will create, um, additional public parking. And the thing about the Cox Center to keep in mind, one of the things that makes the Santa Fe so popular is not only its location, but its connection to the underground. Uh, the, you know, the, the Cox Center is also connected to the underground for, you know, those days where there's inclement weather and stuff. So, um, we're confident we can take care of all of our existing, um, parkers in the Santa Fe. So, that's kind of a recap of the Santa Fe, uh, garage transaction. And so, now, talking a little bit about the, the potential acquisition of the Bricktown Lot. Again, in talking with Bank First, one of the things that they had shared with us was that the permanent parking solution for the Santa Fe was a great start, but their plans in terms of occupancy are certainly, um, to grow the occupancy more than what we have now, right? And so, with the full potential of that tower realized, the existing parking that, that is provided is not enough. And so, again, they, they came to us with, um, you know, desire to, um, look at additional permanent parking. And the way, um, they would do that is basically partner with Bricktown Parking Investors, uh, to purchase that surface lot that I, um, described earlier. And again, the purchase price, or the, the most recent appraised value on that is $1.4 million. So, what, uh, Bricktown Parking Investors and Bank First would do is basically construct an 8 to 900 space, uh, parking garage on that, um, you know, Bricktown Surface Parking Lot. And there's a couple of things in the, in the MOA that are specific to that piece of property. One is, uh, many of you will recall that, uh, when we looked at that property several years ago, we determined that any development on that parcel would really need to, um, have some type of permanent easement by the city to protect a future rail rideaway. Because when we, you know, back up to our fixed guideway plan and our plans for commuter rail and growing the transit system, uh, we've always thought about the need to bring in, or at least be able to provide, an opportunity for rail to come in from the east, commuter rail and/or high-speed rail. And so, as that rail comes in from the east, it would actually turn south, kind of diagonal, through that parcel of land that the surface parking lot is on now to serve a future platform at the Santa Fe intermodal hub.
And then it... And that does have a significant impact on the value of the property. If you take a look at that, it's a large, uh, angular, uh, or a curved piece that goes right through the middle of it. And, and so, it really does impact, uh, the potential of what they can do with that property.
Was that easement included in the previous appraisal?
Yeah, the appraised value of $1.4 million that we did in 2016, uh, did include the provision of that. of that, that easement.
Jim, it also significantly impacts the value of our intermodal hub in downtown in a really positive way, so.
Yes.
So, the MOA, again, has a provision to make sure that that rail right-of-way is protected. And as we go through the process, we'll have the property surveyed, we'll put a permanent easement in place. But the parties have agreed to that. And in addition to agreeing to that easement, you know, they've agreed to, that there will not be a, a structure placed anywhere that would be on that, on that easement or interfere with that future rail development.
Jason, are we speaking with the railroads at the same time? Have we engaged in any conversation?
We haven't had any direct conversation with, namely, UP at this time. But I do think it's important to note that, you know, we had a, we had a working group comprised of the city, COTP, some local rail advocates, ACOG. And we actually went through a study with a consulting firm to identify that rail right-of-way that would need it, that was needed. And that rail right-of-way we identified contemplated basically like any future rail service we could imagine, essentially. And so, now, now, we have had dialogue with that group.
Great. And I do, you know, just want to say as a reminder that ACOG and the committee that we're serving on is using Catherine Hughes as a consultant to help us with our regional transit ideas. And she is an expert in negotiating and working with right-of-way. We might, you know, just want to remember that we might engage her at some point in time to help us discuss this a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. She could be a huge help to us on that.
She could be a big help to us.
So, so, the other nuance in the MOA to mention is that as part of the agreement for the sale of the, of the Bricktown property, the city would construct a connection from the west side of the BNSF tracks to the Santa Fe Parking Garage. Now, it hasn't been determined if that would, connection would be essentially a pedestrian bridge, would be an underground tunnel. But again, the idea is to, to provide that connection, and that's part of the MOA. So, with that, when you think about kind of all these moving pieces, we believe that these two items considered together and, and with the entities involved, one is, we're going to secure the future of a major downtown employer here in downtown, Continental Resources. Also, by working with Bank First, making them a party to this proposed transaction, we have, or we're helping facilitate local ownership, again, of what's considered to be an iconic tower for downtown Oklahoma City, which I think local ownership is, is huge, and probably most would agree. The other thing we haven't really talked about is the flexibility that this transaction gives us in terms of funding for the convention center garage. With the sales price of the Santa Fe Parking Garage of $22.5 million, and knowing that, you know, our early pro formas on the convention center garage, we're looking at COTP bonding somewhere around $26 million, being able to use these proceeds to essentially fund almost all of the, the convention center garage really puts COTP in a good, in a good position. The borrowing need for the convention center garage would be very minimal. And working with finance and, and such, we actually believe it puts us in a better financial position to not have to incur that debt moving forward. Now, with that said, and I'll just back up, you know, from day one, looking at the convention center parking garage, we always had anticipated, you know, using COTP's bonding capacity somewhere around $26 million to be able to fund that project. So, just having these proceeds really just gives us flexibility on that.
The bottom line, we had abilities to fund the convention center parking garage with or without the sale of the Santa Fe Garage.
Just, just a quick question. We know that it has already appraised for $1.4, is that correct?
The Bricktown property, yes, sir.
But it could, we could, it could possibly be more, is that correct?
Could possibly be more, yes.
And Jim, to your point on the convention center garage, this, yes, we would have built it either way, but this allows us to do so without.
Minimize any amount of debt we need to issue.
Yeah, right. I mean, without the borrowing costs significantly, not all the borrowing costs, but much of it.
And allows for bonding capacity in the future, should we need it.
Well, yeah, but we also lose some revenue that comes into it. So, you've got to take a look at it, a holistic approach. And you have a fourth point?
Yes. And then, the last, the last point is, we, we really believe and we're optimistic that with these projects fully developed, an additional 8 to 900 spaces in, in, on the Bricktown Lot, there'll actually be more parking for the public than, than what we have now. Because keep in mind, you know, the Santa Fe Garage, even though it's 1,500 spaces, we allocate about 150 to 170 for just general transient public parking. And a lot of times, we've been in positions where we've oversold that parking. So, whatever we planned to have available, we even oversold that. So, and then, again, with the connection to the underground, I think it's going to be a, a very solid plan for additional public parking on that side of the central business district.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason or anyone else? Councilman Greenwell?
Thank you, Your Honor. The sale of, of both parking lots, I think, makes sense. And we're selling them for current fair market value, and that's probably determined based upon the expected future cash flow and then present value that number. We don't have a copy of the appraisals with us, do we?
No, we can certainly provide them, but, correct, we had an appraisal done and the value's based off what you described.
Okay. So, here's the single area of concern I have. It's the walkway connecting the Bricktown Parking Garage to Santa Fe. It could be built anytime within the next seven years, which places the responsibility for escalation of costs back on the city. We could take a very inexpensive approach and just put up a, kind of a metal bridge across the two, across Shields or EK Gaylord Boulevard to connect the two. Or we could do, but I think ADH would prevent us from taking a simple approach. It would, it could be an expensive process, depending upon how it's finally determined. And for us to be the sole party responsible for that concerns me due to the amount of uncertainty at this time.
We have done preliminary studies and do have costs that were done. A couple of years ago, we, we looked at partnering with Mr. Kartschmer and, and being a part of that. And we, so we do have engineering studies on both underground and above ground, which are very similar in cost, by the way.
Any other questions? Councilman?
This is probably not going to be a very popular question. There's a difference between a need and a want. Can I, is it possible just to walk from Bricktown to get to the office buildings? It doesn't seem to me to be an exorbitant amount. Is it really necessary to build either a tunnel or a bridge is the bottom-line question?
Bank First and Kartschmer believe yes. They believe that the viability of that garage to service downtown office people will require They have a representative in the council chambers, if you'd like to speak further to him.
I prefaced my remarks by saying I didn't think it was going to be very popular. I should have said and, and accepted. But I still say, i- is it possible to do it without funding either the bridge or the tunnel?
A little bit of, say, a little bit of history, we've, you know, we've talked with Bricktown Parking Investors off and on over the last several years about the potential for a garage there, particularly knowing that we were, there's a good chance COTP was going to have to build a convention center garage. Is there anything we could do to support the private sector, you know, to building additional parking in that location? And the, the concept of that pedestrian connection, I mean, it's, it's always come up. It's always been there. So, even before, you know, Bank First interest in the property, it's, it's always been seen as a connection, you know, that connection is needed to make that garage viable. And that's, you know, that's the developer's opinion, but it hasn't moved forward without it.
One of the concerns is, is that once you get, once you get to the Santa Fe Garage, depending upon where you're going, you've still got a ways to go to get some of the office buildings in downtown. So, that's, it isn't like it's immediate. It, it, it's further away, and if it's further away in weather, the less valuable or probable that the garage would, would be used to support downtown.
You know, and two, in looking at, at our local market, you know, there's been opportunities we've had to visit with folks about the Arts District Garage, right? Working on filling the occupancy. And if it's not the first question, it's generally one of the top three questions they ask is, well, you know, it's not, it's not connected to the underground, so I don't, you know, I don't, I'd rather stay in the Santa Fe or, or a facility that, that does have that connection, so.
Larry, I kind of think about it as it's, you know, though, for everyone that parks in Santa Fe right now, they have that out-of-the-weather connection. And so, I liken it a little bit to the discussions we all had about the convention center and the convention center parking garage, and whether or not we needed a connection from the garage into the convention center. You could walk across the street, but to do so in Oklahoma's heat, or rain, or wind, or, you know, whatever, is, is not as desirable, so.
I would say this, I would agree with the comment about the Arts District Garage being more attractive if there was some covered walkway. It wouldn't have to be elevated per se if there was just some means to provide cover for people who would walk across the street, especially now with all the, there has to be 20 traffic signals now along Hudson Boulevard since the new developments have taken place. So, there's plenty of access across Hudson, but for the fact that it's, you're exposed. But here's the significant difference. The city owns the Arts District Garage. We're selling these two garages to private entities. And but yet, we're assuming responsibility for connecting these two private garages.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay, well, a citizen has signed up to speak, and so, I would, now might be the best time. John Womastek, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, but you'll have the opportunity to state your name and your address properly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Holt. You did a great job. John Womastek, 6325 Avalon Lane. Thank you all for the chance to speak. I do park at the Santa Fe Garage regularly. My concern, of course, is the access being denied to regular parking. And I'm a little surprised to hear that, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that it's not okay for Continental to base their parking concern about the Cox Convention Center's parking maybe going away, but that it's okay for the regular people to park there because, oh, it might go away for them. So, that didn't make a lot of sense to, to me. I think there's some alternatives that haven't really been considered. The, the parking at the convention center, we don't know that it's going to be torn down anytime soon. I mean, that's, that's available. First National Center, we've got a massive TIF subsidy for the construction there and for a garage that's going to go in across the street from the Cotter Tower. I don't know if floors could be added or not. I don't know. But there is, there's a parking garage that's going to be built right there. The rates, you know, you're already saying right now that at 170 slots, it's oversold frequently. You know, so, we'll just take those people and make them walk farther. It's okay for them to walk farther. A year ago, a parking meter on the street, you could still get six minutes for a nickel. Today, the cheapest is 50 cents. Our rates are going to continue to go up with our city parking in the garages. And I don't know, it's not easy to come and talk about it because it doesn't seem like a big deal, like it affects that many people. But as someone that's ordinary that uses the garages and the street parking, it is a big deal. And just, I know that the price, I don't argue that the price isn't fair. $22 million sounds like a good price for a garage. But you're talking access for people. And I think there are alternatives.
May I ask some questions, just out of curiosity about your, your own situation? What, do you park there as a regular parker, like you have a monthly pass, or you just, you just use it occasionally?
It's a good question. I've got a small company, and I come downtown maybe eight to 10 times a week or a month. So, I'll hit the garage once or twice a week sometimes. People that work for me will as well. I'll do a delivery downtown a couple of times a week. So, I'm 50 cents in the machines to run my deliveries really quickly. And when I work downtown, usually, jobs start at nine in the morning, I'll pay the 10 bucks for the rate for the day. And I hit the Santa Fe Garage, the Art District Garage, and the one across from the county courthouse.
And depending on where you're going.
Depends on where I'm going. If, if I need the exercise, I'll hit the Santa Fe Garage.
Well, one thing that will change life in downtown that we often don't appreciate is the streetcar and how that will make different parking garages more accessible to some of the places you might be going in a way that it isn't today. No?
Not so much for me. I respectfully disagree. I have equipment. And so, it's not so easy for me. But I, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you all. You all do a great job.
I was just going to say, I really, you know, appreciate your comment about the slight irony or, you know, the situation of it being the Cox Center, both being a problem and a solution. But it really is for right now. And there's this interesting time window and some level of uncertainty about what's going to happen. So, you know, I want you to understand that I think we all have really struggled with people in your situation, the casual parker or the, the small tenant that has 2,000 or 3,000 feet downtown on Park Avenue or somewhere else, and, you know, where do they go? But this does craft as a pretty good solution for right now. And I think Jason makes a very good argument that as a, you know, municipal authority, we have filled that gap always for parking when it wasn't being met by the public or by the private sector. And in this case, you know, we fortunately have the private sector in a big way stepping up to solve some problems for us in this proposed garage east of the tracks, I think, will provide a lot more of this casual parking that could be available. And so, you know, I really appreciate your comments. I, I think they're very well-taken, and I had exactly the same thought in my mind. But I, I do think timing here is important, and it does kind of bridge solutions as we see how downtown will continue to develop. And we've got a lot of stuff happening slightly south and east and very far west. And so, some of these parking needs that are currently centered right in downtown likely move themselves around a little bit as time goes on. And so, I, I really think this is a pretty, not perfect, but it's a nice solution.
And I, in some ways, I would agree. I, I really, I think the price is commendable and all the work that's been done, it's pretty clear, it's been thought through pretty well. I wish there was just a, and I think there are alternatives available to have a carve-out so that people that come down and use the garages during the day aren't, aren't made to walk even farther. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
If I may just comment briefly on your concern, which is a valid one. While if these garages are so, we no longer have control over this, I would suspect, though, because it's the nature of parking garages worldwide, they'll sell so many spaces, they'll be, you know, identified or reserved, quote, reserved, not that the space itself is reserved, but so many people will have access to the parking garage. But on an average day, you won't get 100% occupancy there. I suspect, because since it's privately owned, they'll want to maximize profits, they will open it up for the public to the extent that it's available. In good years, COPTA would have some of their parking garages with an occupancy of 105% to 110%, meaning we've sold a lot to monthly parkers, but not all of them show up, but we still get that revenue. But we open it up to just daily parking. But we open it up to just daily parkers. So I think that concern, I think that opportunity will still be there. Granted, once we sell it, we have no control over that. But I'd suspect since it's privately owned, they will want to maximize profits. And then, one final point. Santa Fe Garage is, is in high demand, but it is the only parking garage in high demand. If you look downtown wide, I'd say the parking garages, both public and private combined, probably have an occupancy of about 60%. So we've got plenty of parking spaces, but it's like a lot of things, it's location, location, location. This just happens to be in a good location. But just immediately to the north, there's a parking garage covered that's available for parking. And again, throughout downtown, I think at best we're at 60% occupancy, so.
And this does not meet John's issue, but I want to say it just so anyone who's only casually listening and might have missed Jason make this point earlier. We do have a contractual agreement here that it will be open to the public in the evenings. But we don't have that, obviously, for the daytime. So what Councilman Green will say, and he thinks that they will make that private sector decision, we do not have that agreement with them. But we do have an agreement, it will be open to the public in the evenings.
No, good point. But I just suspect. I'm sorry. I just suspect that it'll also be available to the day. Maybe not much, there may not be very many spaces available. But if we were willing to sell at 110%, I suspect a private owner will want to do the same.
And I should also say, you know, a lot, one of the rationales for this is that we end up, we've secured a promise for a new garage, you know, in downtown, which again, will be privately owned, but from our perspective, we're just trying to get more parking spots downtown. We think more parking spots, whoever owns them, will somehow accrue benefit to the whole community. And I think that's the case, even if, again, I haven't quite found the perfect solution for John yet. But I bet you, I bet you, Jason, will sit down with you and plot out your future parking strategies.
Thank you, thank you.
And, and Mayor, don't you also, I mean, we are also, you know, entering this period where we're becoming a much more urban city. And in urban cities, you generally have to walk a little bit further than across the street
Right.
from your parking space to your business. And, you know, that's something that Larry and I are really used to in our part of the, our other part of the world. And it's, you know, it's just a fact.
Okay. Are there any other citi, there's no other citizen who signed up to be here, but is there any other citizen who wishes to speak on these items?
I would make a motion that we approve item nine J.
Check the motion. Okay.
May I make one final comment?
Yes, of course.
Okay. When we obtained the appraisal for the new Bricktown, Bricktown parking facility, I just want to make sure that we have factored into it this requirement of a, a walkway connecting, that they don't look at it just as it currently is, that they take into consideration a walkway will be there, which has to increase the value of the currently owned parking garage in Bricktown owned by the city.
Your Honor, the, the motion does have the $1.4 million.
Yeah, yeah. So this motion is for the version that has $1.4 million, yes. And before we vote, Jim, a process question, of course, we will see all of this, all of these transactions again. This is not the sale, actually, this is a memorandum of agreement.
Right. And the reason that we're on this timeframe is because Bank First has so many days of due diligence on the Cotter Tower. And this is the last meeting within that. So we put together this memorandum of agreement, which will be followed sometime in August, maybe September at the latest, which will be firm closing documents on both of these transactions.
So we had this opportunity, obviously, for public comment. We will have another. And I should also point out, you intentionally went to the media a week before the meeting rather than just have this on Friday's agenda so that there could be even more public discussion about these issues than was necessarily required by law.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion from the council on item J, on item nine J? We have a motion on the table. Seeing none, we'll cast our votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on nine K. Is there any discussion there? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to item nine L. This is to enter into an executive session to discuss collective bargaining agreements with our employment groups, notably FOP, AFSMI, and the IAFF. We will need to go into executive session, and so we would need a motion and a vote on that.
Executive session.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Seeing any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will do that, we will handle that at the end of the meeting. We have now item nine M one, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, do we need executive session? We do not. We already deferred item M, nine M one F, stricken, I'm sorry, it was stricken, item nine M one F. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Moving on to 10A1, claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Seeing none, do we need executive session, Kenny? We do not. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now finally, we are at items from council. We'll, we'll start down here.
Just real quickly, I wanted to give a shout out to the Oklahoma City Police Department. I, I was able to recover a trailer with their assistance last week that had been stolen about nine months previously. And if you know anything about trailers, you know they get stolen a lot. I get that complaint all the time. So it was nice to see this one come back to its home. I was pretty giddy Friday afternoon driving it back to my house. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Lieutenant Cooper and his team for going and retrieving it.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman? Councilman Cooper? Anything? Do you wish to, this is our items from council, do you wish to say anything?
Yes. I, I, Mr. Mayor and council, I, I would really hope that our city would maintain its commitment that it's made particularly for development in northeast Oklahoma City. And I'm concerned about the possible reduction in staff and really the direction that is going and could be going in the future, particularly with the alliance, that concerns me. And I want to make sure that we are committed as a city to really responding to an area award that has been neglected for so long. And so I really would like for us to make sure that we're not reneging on our commitment for, and going backwards rather than going forward.
Good. Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. We now have item 12, City Manager Reports, Item A, Presentation on Mosquito Control and Prevention.
Right. Phil May Tubby is here from City County Health to give us an update.
Welcome, Phil.
Hey. Thank you, Mayor Holt, councilors, Mr. Couch. I want to introduce a couple of people to you to give the report. This is Cynthia Bates. She is our mosquito control prevention coordinator. And this is Eric Howard, he's in epidemiology. So this will be short and sweet.
So the first slide is a graph of the mosquito count since the first year of our mosquito surveillance program. So far this year, we've trapped about 2,400 mosquitoes, and that's quite a bit fewer than last year and also the year before that. There's also a lower number of positive trap sites so far compared to last year, where so far we've only had 10, and last year we had about 21. So with the program, there are two main types of surveys that we complete throughout the season. One is after a positive West Nile virus mosquito test. So our municipal partners, Oklahoma City Stormwater Quality and Admin Code Enforcement, maintain the traps. And whenever we have a positive case or positive test at one of those traps, we notify them, and then we supply them with larvicide each year so they can go around the trap in about a half-mile radius survey and look for any kind of stagnant water that they could treat or any kind of habitat remediation that needs to be done. After a human West Nile virus case, the Epi Department provides us with a map with a 500-feet radius around the property. We assign that to an inspector at the Health Department, and they go around passing flyers. And if there are any kinds of stagnant water that they view at a property, they turn in a complaint so it could be worked at a later time. In 2016 and 2017, we also had some surveys associated with travel-associated Zika cases.
Just want to mention a little bit about our human cases. So, so far, well, typically we see cases at the end of the summer, towards the hottest part of the year. And that's typically how this disease works. It's transferred from mosquitoes to humans after it's been hot for, for several weeks. And so we have had most of our cases in the August, September period. You can see on the graph, we've got October and a few November, December. Those are just delayed reportings. The next slide shows our number of cases per year. And so this includes both types of West Nile virus. There's fever, and then there's also a neuroinvasive disease. You can see this, this kind of sloped down. And 2012 was a big outbreak year, and since then, we've put a lot of efforts into managing this disease within the human population and specifically within mosquito population and those interactions. You can see this year, we've only had one case so far, and hopefully, oh, we won't have very many more, or we won't have any more. That would be my wish, but I suspect that we will see a few more. So far, we're seeing fewer cases this year than we did last year, so that's a good thing. I want to speak a little bit about our skeeter meter. So this is a risks notification for West Nile virus. And we collect, we partner with Mezzanite data sources. We collect temperature, we do mosquito counts here, what Cynthia described. Within those mosquitoes, we do check for virus, West Nile virus. And based upon the number of mosquitoes that were tested and the amount of virus, we use that as a variable. We also use mosquito complaints as a variable, and also human cases is a big variable as well that we use to estimate a risk of the likelihood of trans, of mosquito transmitted West Nile virus. So this is provided each week. We have a couple of different media sources that we send out. And I know it's been on a few news broadcasts as well during weather time as well. So that's, it's, we're getting the word out there and really encouraging folks to just protect themselves and others as they can. So that's our, that's our presentation, if we'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
What is the best way to protect yourself? Can you tell the public?
Is to wear bug spray. So we recommend DEET and cover any bare skin. So that's, that's the best recommendation.
Now we have item 12B.
We have a presentation on the city council priority regarding to social and criminal justice. And we're going to kick that off with Police Chief Bill Citi.
Bill, you might need to open with.
It's faster than walking.
I haven't, what, what's this about? I haven't seen this.
I had surgery. I had a tendon that decided it wanted to move, and they had to put it back in place. So I'm off for about eight weeks on this machine. So I've gotten pretty good on it, but you don't want to feel that way. I get too confident, I almost had a couple spills. So you gotta focus. One thing I will miss when I leave this is my purse down here. I may have to start carrying one. It's been pretty convenient. Thank you for having me. We're going to do an update on the, on your city, on your council priorities for what our, what our party is and in supporting that, our criminal justice initiatives for supporting that. So you see here, in the pursuit of the social and criminal justice initiatives, you can see here, and you've seen these before, obviously, but we rely on the percentages of residents citywide reporting they feel safe, the percent of officers who have received procedural justice training. The first measurement is obviously through the surveys, and the percentage of change in the number of people incarcerated from municipal changes. That's fairly new in the last couple of years. We've been tracking that through judicial reform. The number of prisoner days utilized by the Oklahoma City, by Oklahoma City at the Oklahoma County Jail. That goes along with the judicial reform in the last several years in measuring that. The next slide shows you that a percentage of the residents of citywide reporting that people feel safe. And that's, that's done by, that's done through the surveys. I believe this summer, I think, is it August, I believe, we'll have, August 14th, you will, we'll have the results of the next, the survey that has been done this summer. So this is based through 2017, and you can, you can see where we've been as high as 60% in 2009, and we've, we've slipped some to 2017. You know, I've got anecdotal reasons for a lot of that, but it, it does fluctuate. And it's all based on what our benchmark was back in, when we started LFR. Our benchmark was, at the time, it was 55%. The survey showed 55%. So that's kind of what we've benchmarked. The, so procedural justice itself, you know, I mean, we, you've seen this before. It basically describes what our, our definition is, that if we don't, if we don't address, address this procedural justice, which really basically is a fairness, fairness and respect in the, in police, with the community, and our interactions with the community, treating, treating the public fairly, the community fairly, trying to do the right thing. I mean, an example would be who we put in jail, who we don't put in jail. Do they need to be in jail? Do they need to be in the community? Can we deal with them in a more fair, fair and equitable manner? And, and those types of charges in which we do that. So, but if we don't do those types of things, you'll see here on the four bullets, could result in a negative public perception, a decreased ability to recruit candidates, decreased citizen satisfaction, confidence, and cooperation, and decreased actual or perception of unfair and equitable policing. So. I'm, I'm sorry, Chief, to interrupt you, but I just really have seen this being implemented particularly in our community. And just, I've, even as early as last Wednesday, officers actually were out in the community making sure that this happens in terms of just making their presence felt. They even, they even stopped in, in our church. And so I know that this is, can work and is working, and just want to say that. Well, thank you. I, I agree with you. I think we've, and it goes both ways. The community has really worked with this. You've worked with us in the past and currently, so it's, it's, it goes both ways. We need, we needed that interaction. We've tried to improve on that. Instead of being reactive, to be proactive, you know, building those relationships so that we better have a better understanding of each other. So the department has made some significant progress in implementation of things that we think go along, towards these procedural justice initiatives. One of them, I mean, you've seen and heard over and over again, but it's always a work in progress, especially our policies and procedures because it's, it's a fairly new program. And that's the body worn camera program. Now our cameras, we have 345 total cameras in the field now, serving approximately 700 officers. These are all field officers, responsible for taking calls, those types of things. The cameras are utilized by patrol, gang enforcement unit, the hot teams, bicycles, marshals, airports. And we do use them on city-sponsored overtime programs like special events, Bricktown, things like that. One of the other things is implementing the de-escalation procedure and training. That, that training was really, the procedure was implemented in February of 2018, so it's very new. But basically what it is, is, is we're wanting, we're wanting officers to think more about tactically, about how they approach something and how they deal with something. Maybe slow things down, maybe wait for backup. You know, they, they've always done that. Officers made good decisions, they did a lot of good things. But we never had anything that we really, really had in procedure and, and held individuals accountable for. And now we're actually evaluating that. When they have a use of force, things like that, how did they approach that? And you're seeing that, that's a trend, and that's basically a best practice across the country. That's something we have to be doing. In fact, if we do that, and Calea certification, that's one of the things that we get graded on. Do you have those types of things implemented, and you have you trained your officers on it? So I think we, it, it is, and it's, it's a cultural change, and it takes time. But I, this department has been very good in the past as far as accepting a lot of those things. So we're, we're working through those issues now. And it'll, we will continue to do that. So, you know, we've had training and implicit bias. It's about time to, to, to do that again. Community outreach, which is, is what Pastor Cooper, Councilman Cooper was talking about. Community outreach, which is what Pastor Cooper, Councilman Cooper was talking about. We really increased the number of outreach programs in all the divisions and wanting the officers in the divisions to interact with the community they serve to a lot more extent than they have in the past. So, coordinating with municipal, county, and state government to address justice reform. Obviously, there's a lot going on, both at the, you know, with the state, with the local. The chamber has taken on a huge role. The city manager is involved in that. The mayor's office is involved in that. As far as trying to, to really address some of the judicial reform that we need to keep more people out of jail, provide alternatives, still hold people accountable, but also provide alternatives to just locking somebody up. So, those things, there's several different initiatives. I think the city has done an exceptional job. I think the courts has done an exceptional job. We worked with the courts on some of those things along with the state. A lot of those have to do with personal recognizance releases, and I'll, I'll show that again, some of that on the next slide. Courts have really, really been aggressive on trying to release people on their own recognizance, and we're trying to increase that in the field and give officers a little bit more discretion. We've increased the number of crisis intervention team officers. Those are the officers that are, that are specifically trained, accelerated training in handling the mentally ill. We increased the number to 155. That gives us about 24% of our officers in the field in patrol are CIT-trained. And we, the national-wide best practice on programs like this, not all, everybody has the same program, but the national standard is 25%. So, we're, we're there. We're, we're at that. Actually, I'd like to have a bigger percentage than that, but, but those, those officers are utilized a great, great deal, especially when we're dealing with somebody with, with mental health issues. We have a partnership with the Oklahoma Department of Health and Substance. They got a four-year grant. They're actually paying for the salary of an officer, one of our CIT officers, to actually work with the Department of Mental Health and work with our service providers in the mental health industry. They are proactive. They go out and they, they actually go to the client's house that's being treated. We try to identify individuals that we're getting the most calls on or repeat offenders that have mental health problems, and usually, the majority of the time, the problem is is they're not coming in for services or not taking their medication. So, it's a, it's a partnership with the Department of Mental Health. I'd like to increase that program because I think we've seen a great deal of benefit in that. So, but right now, that's, that's a four-year. We've probably been there in about a year. We probably have three years left on that. So, those are some of the initiatives that we're working on. Now, the slide next is going to show you the percent of change in the number of people incarcerated just for municipal, just for municipal charges. So, these are people that are, that we put in jail for just city charges, and you can see since 2015, the significant drop. It's been a total drop between fiscal year 15 and 18 of 42%. That's, that's enormous, and going from about 13,000 to about 7,500. There's, there's several reasons for that. I mean, there's a little bit of that reason, maybe that we're doing, we're counting it better, we're tracking it better. The systems we put in place are tracking a little bit better, so we think we're getting, you know, better numbers, but, but the majority of it has to do with what, what the, what the county and what the city courts has done, and actually, we're not even picking up people on failure to pay. If they have a warrant on failure to pay, we don't take them to jail because it's a revolving door for them. So, they're working out other, other means of trying to increase the intimacy hearings in courts so that we bring people in and try to find alternatives for their inability to pay. So, the courts has done a great job, and probably a, a big part of that has been, can be attributed to what courts has done also in getting people out of jail. The next slide is going to show you the number of days, which probably indicates that even better, because the courts had put, put some, put policies in place that actually, there was either a 10-hour or 24-hour automatic OR. So, a lot of individuals that go in on, on certain charges that aren't violent crime will be OR-ed out in 24 hours. That, that means they're not spending three, four, or five, sometimes longer, in jail. The other side, which reduces the days, the other side of that is that the county's doing a better job getting people out of jail. A lot of it has to do with us putting fewer people in jail, so they don't have as many clients to have to deal with inside the jail, and they can manage that more easily. There's a combination of factors. We, the police department has created in the past site and release, where we can cite certain city charges in the field and release them. We're talking about increasing that, and I'll show you the next slide. These are some of the charges that we're, we're looking at, we're looking at, including, there's about 10 of them as far as site and release. And you can see here, and there, there are going to be charges where somebody's not violent, where not a significant violent crime has occurred. Assault and battery with no injuries, you know, somebody's gotten in a fistfight or something, and, you know, we, we'll, we'll sign citations and release them in the field. You've got destruction of private property, first offense, disorderly conduct, driving under revocation, driving under suspension, larceny of merchandise, first offense, no state driver's license, first offense. The next two, possession of drug paraphernalia and possession of marijuana, we're, we're looking at writing them a ticket, because right now, it's a class, it's a Class B offense, which really puts them into a quarter record. That means they have to go to jail. So, we're looking at possession of marijuana, writing somebody a citation, and releasing them in the field. This has nothing to do with the current state law that's going on, what they're working through. Regardless of what they come up with, this will still apply. So, it gives us the ability to write those citations instead of automatically putting them in jail like we do now. First offense, these first offenses are something we're going to have to look at. We're going to start with that. It's something that we can, we can see that maybe we want to do the second offense rather than the first and second offense. But we're going to start with these. Like I said, possession of paraphernalia, possession of marijuana, we're going to, that will take an order to change. That will come to you at some point in time to make those changes, so we're allowed to do that. As you can see, you know, it's, all these things together, it's a, it's a work in progress. It takes the courts, it takes us, it takes the county, and most of what we're trying to do, and we've had the biggest impact on, obviously, the city side, we've been able to take a lot of initiatives, I think, that sometimes now the state's still struggling through. They've implemented some real positive things. I think Sheriff Taylor has really, really done a much better job of processing people out of the jail and getting them out of the jail much quicker rather than sitting in there for days. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? All right. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
And I think there's a second part of this with Chris, right?
Yes, standing in for Aubrey today. The second part of this is the planning department's measures with respect to this initiative. As we discussed earlier, obviously, the planning department has a lot of functions and initiatives that relate to social justice, but the indicators that are selected for this measure is the number of homeless persons identified during the point-time count, which obviously, we've been doing for a number of years, and the number of federally assisted affordable rental housing units, which is a new measure that was imposed last year. So, our point-time count, we probably all saw, was released last week. It is our annual count of the homeless done each year in January with the help of a number of service agencies and volunteers that we coordinate. We go to the places that we know where the homeless exist, in emergency shelters, transitional housing, any kind of places where meals are provided, any kind of homeless camps that we're aware of, and go out and actually interview and survey the homeless to try and determine their medical situation, their psychological situation, the causes of the homelessness, and we determine the most medically fragile amongst them that we, we find. We come back and we enter into all the database and kind of get our, our snapshot of our homeless situation. The point-in-time this year, we did find a decrease in the amount of persons surveyed. We found 1,183 this year, a decrease from last year, and we also found the number of shelved, unsheltered persons who are living either just on the street or in some place that's not, not habitable, has increased by 126, 394 persons found in that situation. One of the things we look at is those who are chronically homeless. In general, that's persons who have been homeless for more than a year. These are the most difficult population and generally take the highest costs on the community in terms of police and fire and medical response. So, it's a goal to try and identify these persons and prioritize them for shelter.
Chris, may I just ask a question? Is some of the tremendous increase, or significant increase in unsheltered folks related to some of the beds being taken out of the system? We've had some shelters that have changed their policies about who they'll take and...
Certainly, that has had an effect. I think we have had a couple of shelters who have imposed barriers or not allowing housing as, to the general community as they were.
Okay. Thank you.
The, again, the point-in-time is just a one-day snapshot. It is estimated that in communities nationwide, the count that you can expect is four to five, that, four to five times that one-day count, so we're looking at around 5,000 to 6,000 people probably. And the survey doesn't count people who are couch homeless, and for some reason, the city manager indicated to me that he's not real fond of that term. So, in future presentations, we may have to refer to that as the sofa homeless. But basically, there are people who move in with friends or relatives and move on from location to location to try and keep roofs over their heads. This year, the Oklahoma City Public School always counts their homeless population of children enrolled. It was down a little bit. It's a little over 5,000 this year. The number who are couch homeless are up in percentage. Last year, it was about 80%. Now, we're seeing about 94%. So, that's interesting. We have obviously ongoing challenges. It is mentioned, one of those is a decreasing number of low-barrier emergency shelter beds, and by low barrier, we mean you don't have to enter a sobriety program, you don't have to have a religious affiliation, you don't have to engage in any kind of programmatic experience to receive shelter. We also have the couch homeless that we're talking about. The federal resources that we have are not able to address that community at all. The ongoing lack of mental health and substance abuse services in our state and city, definitely a shortage. A lack of affordable housing, particularly for those very, the poor among our community. And we have a freeze and decrease of Section 8 vouchers, which is causing some of the persons who need voucher assistance to be unable to obtain that. So, we went over earlier the type of grants that we have. Most of the federal government, the Continuum of Care Grant is the one grant that we did not discuss earlier that is a competitive grant. It's not an entitlement, so we apply to those funds for each year, and that's our largest single source of about $3.5 million. The other grants of ESG and HOPLA, and then the City Social Services Grant from the General Fund is $121,000. And this particular slice, albeit small, of the, of the total, is important because most of the other federal programs have very stringent requirements on what you can and cannot spend the money for and who can be served. So, certain activities our, our agencies need to provide. This helps them to provide matching funds. This helps to provide employment services, so it is an important contribution. The collaborative initiative among our agencies is called the Journey Home OKC Collaborative, and it's been in place for a number of years with over 40 government, faith-based, and nonprofit service providers, and they meet and discuss issues, and they combine their resources using a coordinated approach so that we can try and avoid duplication of services or avoid any service gaps. This year, the, the group, Journey Home Program housed over 236 veterans. Veteran housing has been a priority for the last several years, and 132 chronically homeless. And we have a greater than 90% retention rate, which is very good compared to national averages. Another new initiative that was taken on this year is now all the Journey Home Partner organizations are participating with a coordinated intake and entry system, and they're using standardized survey tools to assess the people that they serve so that we, all the different agencies are asking the same questions and finding the same information, and they're prioritizing clients into one common list. And so, all the partners can pull from that list, and those that are at the top of the list that are the most vulnerable are getting served more effectively and faster and may need services from several different agencies that they combine together to provide. The second indicator is the number of federally assisted affordable rental housing units. The data that we got last year was from the National Housing Preservation Database that's updated a couple of times a year, three times a year. This year, we tried to enhance that, look a little closer. We added some Census Bureau data, some information from the Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency, and the Oklahoma City Housing Authority, and some of the other information that we had to try and refine these numbers. This year, we find there's 8,876 units that receive some kind of federal assistance. There's a whole list of those types of programs on the left side of the slide. That number is a net increase of 704 from the numbers we were seeing last year. In addition to this, there's 4,302 units that are assisted with housing choice vouchers. That is, the apartment facility itself is not receiving a federal subsidy, but the persons who need vouchers are able to use them at any apartment or in the city that will accept that voucher. When we look at the demand for affordable housing, we're talking the total number of households being 235,000, a little bit over. Our median household income for Oklahoma City proper, again, is about 50,000. 40% of our population is considered to be low-mod income eligible. The proportion of rent, renters that we saw in the city went up about 1% or 2% over the last year, and in contrast, the number of homeowners. So, we're seeing a little more, a little more rental. What we see is that basically, those who are 60% to 80% AMA, their AMI, average median income, there is housing out there available for every 100 persons that are looking for assistance. There are either 170, 107 units at 60% or 116 units at 80%. So, the units are there. There is a question, that some of those units may not be of the best quality or maybe substandard, but the quantity is there. When we look at our low, extremely low-income populations, and I'd note it, 30% AMA, MI, we're talking about $15,000 a year salary, which is about what a person works full-time making minimum wage is earning. So, when we look at those families, for every 100 that we have trying to rent, there's only 26 available units, and for those at 50%, for every 100, there's only 67 available units, so definitely, this is an area of need. So, again, we talked earlier about some of our city programs that we try and do to support affordable housing development and quality through our internal programs. In our CHODOs, we impact improvement or construct about 200 to 300 affordable housing units each year, and of course, the new GOLT Affordable Housing Program is excellent. We're very thankful for the new resource that will help assist affordable housing, and the council approved those new guidelines in, earlier this month. On the federal level, we still see dramatic reductions in funding for housing, for housing and social services continue to be proposed. There's all kinds of proposals for new rules to impose that would require additional burden or requirement for those who need housing. In general, the House and Senate funding proposals for 2019 are looking pretty good. They support current funding levels or perhaps slight increases. There's a tremendous shortage still nationwide in our public housing capital improvement needs that are estimated at $30 billion to bring those units up to standards. The federal funding was about a little under $3 billion this year. So, the consensus seems to be on the federal level, the, there's a lot of debate and uncertainty in terms of where it will go with affordable housing, and there seems to be more and more consensus that states and municipalities will have to deal with this issue on an increased basis in the future. Questions?
Okay. Thank you. Chris, just Councilman Greenwood?
A question. In one of your slides, you showed that transitional housing occupancy, or the number of occupants declined, where the unsheltered increased. What's the general requirement to be able to participate in the transitional housing? Do you have to have lived here in Oklahoma City for a period of time?
No, no. It depends on the shelter. The shelter that we have had has, most of the shelters are no barrier. You're homeless, you come in, you get shelter. If there's beds... available. The problem is, is that some of the larger, larger shelter, this city rescue mission has just changed its approach and policies in terms of what they want to do with their program. And they had several hundred beds. So that's provides a shortage. They now have requirements for persons to stay there.
Yeah. And so that's an example of transitional housing is one of the shelters.
Yes, where you, yeah, she would just stay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay. Thank you. I think on to then to item 12C?
Right. Two other items I want to comment on under city management reports. The first is the impact fees. When we adopted it, some of the council wanted to make sure that we have a mechanism in there for annual adoptions according to the, an index to make sure that we keep up with the times. And so the ordinance specifically called out that a new, a new rate be established on July 1st of 18. So it's over the three-year period. And so it's about 10%, which is about a little over 3% a year. And then the ordinance calls for then annual adjustments to happen beyond that. So this is as per the ordinance that was adopted. And then item D is the sales and use tax collections report. And it's our first check for for July. And it's 4.3% over projections. And we did project growth in the year. And, you know, as we know, it's a large amount over last year, but that's skewed because of the change in the sales tax rate from the 2%, the general fund going from the 2% to the 2 and 1/4. So that's the difference why it's so, the year to year is so great. But if you take a look at it, the projections were 4.3% over that. So it's a good, good way to start fiscal 19. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about the impact fees.
Yes.
Do we have a plan on...
Turn the mic on, Councilman.
Yep.
Just not...
Do we have a plan on how, when and how we're going to start spending that that money? Because, I mean, I imagine that at least in the Northwest and Southwest, probably some of the other ones too, that there is, there is some significant...
Yeah. One of the things we've done is we've got some engineering studies going on right now that Mr. Winger has put out so that we can evaluate and come up with some recommendations for where the major need is for those impact fee dollars.
Okay, cool. Thanks. Okay. No other questions for the city manager? And item E can be found online at the packet on okc.gov. And we are now at citizens to be heard. And we do have one citizen who's signed up, Doak Boring. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address. And thank you for your patience.
Doak Boring. I live on North Youngs Boulevard.
And you have three minutes and we'd love to hear from you.
Okay. They, Embark's been charging for Sundays. I have proof right here. Their time goes in on Sunday when the bus is not running. They're also have, call it a seven-day pass when it should be a six-day pass because they're not open on Sunday. You're also not getting your, as far as the monthly rate, everything, you're not getting your hours. And so the passes that you're paying for, you're getting gypped. Also, the Social Security Office, the bus only runs three times a day. It's putting overload on federal employees and the people that are disabled that are having to go there. It's having to sit out in the rain or the heat because of the bus system. The bus stop also as well are not secure. The bus stop on the May Street exit just got ran over. In most cities, they have concrete barricades where you can't get ran over on the bus. The, let's see, what else? The safety issue, the street car that you're calling a street car in most cities is called the rail system. They, street cars, which you'd see in Little Rock, Arkansas, or California. There's a real sophisticated rail system that they're putting in here. But it does, it looks to me like it's running around in just a circle. It doesn't go to the places to reach. When it's going in a circle, eight, it should be one going this way, one going that way, north, south, east from west. And the platforms that I've seen set up, they're not sufficient. The old bus stops that you have out here, it's a concrete out in the sun, not covered. And that's just for your own route. And then the reason why you have so many homeless people out here is because they can't get jobs. Why? Why would they want to hire you? Because you don't have transportation. City transportation only runs from 5:30 in the morning till 5:30 at night on my route. And that's Pennsylvania. And why would somebody want to hire you to work in a restaurant when most restaurants are open until 10 o'clock? And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Well, yeah, that was, that ran the gamut of the weaknesses in our, in our transit system, which we're aware of and we try to work on every day. And of course, Jason is here. I don't know if, Jason, do you want to respond to any of that here? Or do you want to just meet with him afterwards?
[inaudible].
Okay. Yeah, he'll, this is our transit director and he would take, he'll take as much time as...
Oh, I got one more thing too. Also, the Medicaid department is having to reissue Medicaid cards. And so when I entered the city, I didn't have a Medicaid card. This is a letter showing that you have Medicaid that's put out by Medicaid to be used as a Medicaid card until they reissue the cards with the new number on them. And that's all across America. And so there's a big, and they won't accept that being disabled with this...
Oh, okay. I got you. This is, this is relative to your...
This is acceptable at any doctor's office and any hospital.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Jason will visit with you about that as well. Thank you for your time. Okay. Well, we have an executive session on item 9L. We were, yeah, 9L, which we previously voted on. We will go into that and we will return.